Thank you for joining. We'll let the people in the meeting know that you're here.
Oh, I think you're muted.
Hi, can you hear us in the council chambers?
We can. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can. We'll get started here in just a minute or two.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Yep, okay, we're ready. Good evening, everyone. With the posted time having arrived and a quorum of members present, I will call the Committee of the Whole for October 9th, 2025, to order. We have a few items on our agenda today. The first item on our agenda for today, though, is public comment. Has anyone, anyone in attendance wished to make public comment? Come on up. Just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Marie Schmidt at 1205 Parcher Street here in Wausau. As one of the neighborhood leads for our group, every month we get a list, a list of needs from the neighborhood schools. That list always has on it food, personal hygiene products, clothing, and school supplies. They distribute the donated items to the students whose families can no longer afford to provide the basic necessities. The number of families who can no longer provide for their children grows each year. These are needed items, not wanted items. Now, you want to proceed with a referendum to take even more away from the taxpayers. That means higher property taxes and higher rents. The ripple effect will be catastrophic, especially on those residents who have a hard time now. You can't spend $130,000 on trying to re-educate people to try to convince them to think it's okay and agree to take even more money away from them with a referendum. It's wrong, and you're taking away from their needs. We hear their cries every month, every time we get an updated list from the schools pleading for donations to meet the ever-growing needs of basic items. So I ask you, when are you going to hear their cries for help to feed their clothes, to feed and clothe their children, to be able to provide shampoo, toothpaste, soap, toilet paper, and basic food? They should be able to provide these, but they can't. Don't make it worse for residents with this referendum. Let's take back, let's take us back to a government that provides the needs only. The want list needs, needs to come to a scratching halt. You will never be able to meet all the wants people have. Stop the wants, concentrate on the needs, and you won't have to worry about any referendum. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to our agenda item number two, which is discussion on proposed positions to be covered by the referendum. The agenda states that is nine Safer firefighters, three ARPA firefighters, two police officers, one community outreach specialist, and one community care paramedic. Now, I do believe since the agenda was posted, internal discussions have resulted in some positive movement on what actually would need to be included in a referendum were you to decide that you wanted to go forward with one. So I'm going to turn over to Mary Ann, and she can talk to us about what specifically would and would not need to be a part of that question. Thank you.
Sure, and perhaps Jeremy would be better at this. We did meet today, and the fire department came up with what we think is a very good idea to kind of streamline this process. So I'll let Jeremy introduce it since it was their idea.
Welcome, Chief Cobb.
Thank you. Thanks for your time tonight, everyone. I don't want to get too far ahead of the presentation, but with, with the meeting that we have with Chief Barnes, myself, and a few others, the mayor, we talked about a bunch of different things. And one of the things that, that came up that Deputy Chief Pluse and I were storming around a couple of days ago was, in order to simplify this tough decision of having to possibly go to a referendum to increase the levy and to learn all the different things that Mary Ann had to teach us over the last few weeks, the idea was to just bring 12 firefighters to the referendum and use, you know, we were getting creative with the GMT money and the, and the other revenues in order to look at all 15 of these positions and how we could do it. If we use some of that other revenue to subsidize the PD positions, then we're just looking at a firefighter, 12 firefighter referendum to move forward and to keep it simple and to have it make more sense for the residents of the city of Wausau. Because at the end of the day, you know, we don't want to try to confuse anyone. We want to be an open book and talk about, you know, the help that we need and, and the struggles that we're up against. You know, we came to the same room, I think it was November 6th of 2021, with 20-some firefighters in the back of the room and asked for help then. And we got the help, and we went for the Safer grant, and we got to a place where our department is now a, it's a destination department. It's no longer a stepping stone department. We have overcome a lot of obstacles in the, in the past few years. A lot of you have been here for a lot of them. And, you know, here we are with, with a money dilemma, right? And in order to keep the progress alive that we've gotten in the Wausau Fire Department. So in order to keep it simple, I think that was kind of our idea compared to what you're seeing in the agenda with all the 15 positions. So I think with that, before the presentation goes, because I see the girls up on the screen, but I'll entertain any questions you might have about that. Does that kind of cover it, Mary Ann?
Yep.
The one question that I have, Chief, and I think I'd like you to speak to just a little bit, is based on our interactions with you along the way at Public Health and Safety and HR and Finance and all of the different components that played into the onboarding of the extra firefighters in the first place. What gave rise to the need for those hires in the first place was that you had been for years and years staffed at minimum staffing, minimum allowable staffing levels. Call volume was increasing, and the size of the department had not kept up with the increase in call volume and the increase in territory that served by the city of Wausau. The city was much smaller when the size of the original department was established. That said, I guess, just talk to us a little bit about those struggles, because you were there at the time in, in, in the command team where, you know, when multiple calls would come at one time, I think, at least from what I remember, there were some struggles there to respond and get enough of a crew to respond to certain things. I know at one point we had, you know, an active fire situation where a firefighter struggled to alone get water on a building downtown. So those are the things that I hope that we have not forgotten. You know, not advocating either way, because I mean, at some point, we're going to have to make a decision. But I think that it shouldn't be lost on us for why we onboarded new, additional firefighters in the first place. And I guess I would like to have you remind, remind us of that.
No, and I, I appreciate that. There's a lot of good points. And I, I think, you know, when you look back at the Wausau Fire Department up until three years ago, 50 years before that, we were the same size we were three years ago. And 50, or 50 years ago, and 50 years ago, we were running just over 2,000 calls. Next year, we're going to run over 7,000 calls. Back then, we were doing just firefighting. We weren't into hazmat. We weren't in any of the special teams, high-angle rescue, and all the different things. So our call volumes has, has increased, the demands on our crews have increased, the training requirements have increased. NFPA standards have kept moving us forward with what, how many people we need on an engine, how many people we need on our ladder truck, how many people we need on a rescue truck. You know, we're three stations. 50 years ago, we were four stations. We decreased to three stations. We decreased our staffing by one. We went from 18 to 17 at some point in between those 50 years and now. And, you know, we're cross-staffing engines with ladder trucks, depending on what the call comes in. And we just made so much progress in that realm, and we just, we keep doing more with less, so to speak. I know we've all can say that in all our careers, right? But when you look at a stagnant fire department for 50 years, where a call volume's almost quadrupled, not to mention the expectations of our firefighters and paramedics before we were even paramedics back then also. So I think you're, you're looking at all these different things that we keep, we keep up with because of the demands of not only the federal levels, but the state level. And, and I think we do a good job of it, and we are a fire department that's built around pride, and we're built around stepping up to every challenge that we're faced with and finding an answer. You know, but I think it is worth saying, and I'm glad Alder Rasmussen brought that up, was that we are doing all these things, and we're getting to a point where we're meeting the requirements. There's a standard by NFPA that on every, the minimum amount of people on every structure fire is 18. Well, right now, we can only pull it off if we don't have an ambulance call. You know, we run three-staffed ambulances in the city of Wausau, and we're looking more and more on a weekly and daily basis that a fourth ambulance goes out. When a fourth ambulance goes out, that's a fire engine that's not going to leave the station. So we're down to two stations with one fire engine apiece. You know, we've called mutual aid over 20 times already this year, the last I checked, and that was a couple of months ago. So it's probably closer to 30 to help us handle our, our ambulance calls because the call volume's so high and the turnaround time takes so long with waits in the ER and our report writing and the different things that we have to meet for, for our standards in that realm. So I mean, gone are the days of, of writing, you know, on a notepad and handing it to the, to the ER nurse and driving away and being ready for the next call. You know, you spend the next 45 minutes typing a report that's going to hold up in court and do all these other things. So you know what? The list goes on and on, and I don't want to try to overwhelm you guys, but I think it's important to know that, you know, we do important things every day, and the, the standards change, you know, every year and every month. And, and we're trying to do the best we can with what we have. And right now, we're at a spot where you, I think you can all remember me up here asking you two years ago, where we were ordering people in every day. I, you know, two years ago, I wouldn't, or last year, I personally worked hunting season and Christmas and New Year's so that our people would stop getting ordered in because I was, you know, I was feeling the strain on them. And, and that's not how you keep employees. So, you know, we were doing a lot of things as, as we could to help each other out, boost each other up, and keep our spirits up. And now we're, we're to that place, but unfortunately, we're so close to that Safer Grant ending, which gave us the tool to get to that place. And again, now we're here trying to find creative ways to get to that challenge and ask for help again from, from the citizens of Wausau.
Sure. The other question I'd have from Mary Ann is I can remember back when we started to have those discussions about grant funding and ARPA funding those firefighters. We did make our best effort to try to time the ending of the grant and the onboarding of the people with the eventual closure of TID 6, which has happened. That said, though, with expenditure restraint and levy limits and all of these other things that are squeezing down on us, you know, I guess, talk to us a little bit about the infusion that comes to the general fund, but the fact that with the other pressures, that maybe is not enough.
Right, so.
I mean, we, we did try to time it to at least meet some of that need.
Yes.
Okay.
We were allowed to add, this year, when we did the levy, we were allowed to add about $600,000 to the levy because of the TID closure. And again, you know, I do have some slides that Eller's provided that really kind of explains why we're in the predicament we're in, which, sure, if you want to present those. You know, the levy limit was implemented back in 2006, and really, it allows a municipality to increase its levy annually by net new construction. And particularly, when we look at this, oh, I got it straight. Okay, hold on. So, um, so if you mind, go to the next slide. So you can really see how these last couple of years, net new construction has not kept pace with CPI at all. So for example, in 2022, this is statewide averages because it's a slide that Eller's used for a presentation. But if you look at that, the net new construction statewide was 1.71 in '22, and CPI was 7.7. 23, net new construction was 1.74. CPI was 5.4 in '24. Net new construction was 1.62. CPI was 3.1. And really, historically, we, CPI really hasn't actually been sufficient for us to. And I think, you know, when you look at some of the costs, the ongoing costs that we have that we have to balance each year, particularly with health insurance and the cost of healthcare, you know, as you know, we have a 9.5% increase in healthcare this year. You know, all of those pressures are really more than what the levy limit can offer each year with that net new construction. So in this budget, the '26 budget, because that TID closed, we were given additional $600,000 for that levy, but it was consumed with cost to continue. Even though we, you know, did a lot of deferrals of expenses, those increases in healthcare, the increase in the curb-side garbage and recycling pickup, all of those things really took all of our levy limit that we had available. So yes, TID 6 did drop the tax rate. It is dropping the tax rate for the schools, the county, the technical college. But it doesn't help us with levy limit because they only give us a little bit of the TID 6 closure. So we still have to go for referendum if we want to use the rest of that TID 6 closure, basically, because it's only allowing us a little bit of the closure. So really, this is why we're in the predicament that we're in is because we are not able to stay within net new construction when we look at our expenses. The next one really kind of, oh, that's okay. Is there one before that? Oh, yeah. Here, too, it kind of looks at the average. Again, net new construction, average U.S. inflation, and you can see the last few years how it really has gotten out of whack. And then I think the other, the next chart basically shows that, you know, there's a compounding effect, too. So when your CPI is higher than net new construction, year after year, that shortfall that you experience, that you're really not able to capture, compounds then each one of those years. And that's what this slide is supposed to show.
I think this is indicative of the trend that we see nationwide as well. When the economy is in a state of inflation where interest rates are going up, people are hanging on to their money, there's a volume of uncertainty. I think that, you know, this is the consequence of that. I mean, when we look at the chart, you can see the spike happen, and you can see it start to come back down, but it is nowhere near back down to where it was, you know, say, five years ago. So did you want to take questions from council members now, or do you want to finish your presentation?
Oh, yeah, I can just.
Alder Larson has a quick question if you want to. Okay, go ahead, Lou.
Well, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a quick question. You know, when the chief was saying about he just wants to put the 12 firefighters on a referendum, what happens to the other four positions? I'm specifically concerned about, you know, the important, the one community outreach specialist and the one community care paramedic, because those two, those two positions have made quite an impact on our community. And I, what happens with those if they're not going to be in the referendum? How, how are they going to be retained and, and, or not? And, and where is the money going to come from if?
My understanding was they found alternative ways to fund those without, without that. Go ahead, Jeremy.
So in that initial agenda there with all the 15 positions, what we talked about was using not only the referendum, but using GMT money to kind of offset and bring that number down of what we'd be asking for. That's the, that's the revenue that we started to be able to collect from the, from the state level and the federal level as far as Medicare goes. Instead of combining that and confusing it, what we thought about was using that money to pay for those positions. While Chief Barnes would still look for other funding as far as grants and different things so that we could keep that alive and our partnerships with our community partners, while we just focused on the need of the 12 firefighters with the Safer Grant ending. Does that kind of answer it?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
So that takes that funding away from the referendum.
So they'll still be a part of it. They're not just going to get tossed aside, is what I, was my concern.
That's the plan, yes.
Thank you.
My understanding also is that HR has a related item on their agenda coming for next week also, and the chief will be making a presentation there about some of those things so they can kind of talk through some of that as well. So, go ahead.
Okay, so then I think the next couple of slides, it's really like, what other options do you have? And obviously, the city of Wausau, you know, has been reluctant to diversify our revenue sources. In this example, they say there really isn't a lot of options. One of them is public fire protection, that you can move that from the general fund to the utility bill. That is something that the city did years ago, so that is not available to us right now. And then on the next slide, they talk about, you know, really, instead of paying cash for capital projects, moving it all to debt-funded. And, you know, like, the city right now is only funding, you know, just shy of $500,000 a year for our capital projects each year. So there's really, that doesn't really provide us with a lot of flexibility either, because we, we don't fund a lot with cash right now. Again, because over the years, when the state cut shared revenues years ago, that was really the only opportunity we had, again, because we were so reluctant to implement other revenue sources. So that is also not a big option for us. And then as far as the referendum, the statutes are really pretty clear about what kind of language you can use on your question, and it's not a very easy question to answer. So it's really important to be able to communicate with the residents on what a yes vote means, what a no vote means, and what we're trying to accomplish through the referendum. We can't tell people how to vote, but we can explain to them, well, if you vote yes, this is what it means, and if you vote no, this is what it means. The state statutes right now allow for a one-time increase, an ongoing increase. We would want to basically increase our base for an ongoing or indefinite period of time. So, you know, if our, our request would be to increase the levy by a specific dollar amount, and that would become basically part of the base in future years. So that would be the kind of levy, because obviously, these are ongoing expenses, because they're payroll expenses. So that's what we would be wanting to accomplish. But we would have to describe the referendum in a way that meets the state statutes. And then the timeline. So from our perspective, we felt that the April election would be the appropriate election to target because it's a large election, and it will give us time after the election to plan accordingly, depending on how the referendum turns out for that 2027 budget. And when we talked to Miller Communications, by delaying into the later elections, number one, we wouldn't have time to respond to the referendum if we waited too late, past August. And secondly, we would be, I guess, competing with the state elections and all of the information that the residents are going to get when the governor election is up. So the April election is probably less noise than once we get into the state, big state elections later in the year. And so that was the recommendation as far as going for that April election. And when you look at, can you go to the next slide? If you look at their spreadsheet, we have to have that question by January 27th so that it can get placed on the ballot on a timely basis. So we don't need to have what that question is going to be until January, but we need to figure out how we're going to communicate with the residents so that they can understand why we need the referendum and what value it, it would provide to them to have those 12 firefighters. And that's why we're requesting to have a professional communication organization help us because, as you know, we don't have any professional communication staff at the city. We all are, I think, have heavy workloads today. We have some experience of what it's like to try to communicate with our residents for referendums because we tried to communicate with the referendums on the stormwater. We tried to communicate with the garbage, and we weren't very effective at it. And I think hiring a professional, just like when you hire professionals at home to put on your roof or fix your car, you do it because that's what they have the experience to do. And we do not have that. So that is really why we've asked if we could hire a communication specialist to assist us with it. And when you, I know that there's some sticker shock on the cost, but when you look at the cost, a lot of that is actually getting the publications out to our residents. And so if we did it ourselves, or if we hire someone else to do it, those costs are going to be there. So I just, you know, think that you have to keep that in mind.
Postage and the printing and whatnot?
Yes, yes.
Okay. You know, and I just, I guess, what comes to my mind then is, you know, when we had gone to referendum on those couple of questions you mentioned in 2015, I was on the council at that time, and I had lots of conversations in neighborhoods with my neighborhood group. And we had what I thought was a robust public-facing communication effort. There was public information sessions held here. Staff went out to neighborhood groups. There was information that was put out online. There was stuff in the newsletters. In spite of that robust effort, there was a lot of the population that did not understand the questions and did not understand the impact of a yes or a no vote. Both those questions failed. And I was just telling a couple of our members on my way in today, after that took place, I then was approached by, you know, constituents who asked me about these things. And when I talked to them about the exact things we talked about in the meeting as far as mill rate impacts and whatnot, the answer that I got from all but one person was, well, jeez, if I'd have known that, I might have voted for it. And so I kept thinking, you know, each of us, even as alders, is not going to have a way to communicate with the 3,000 people we represent. We're just not. And, you know, if you communicate with 10 or 20 or 100, that leaves a lot of your population either uninformed or, or just not getting, may potentially not getting that information, but yet being asked to go out and make an educated decision and vote on this. So, you know, I found myself, after our two failures in 2015, wishing that we had done a better job on the public education piece. In spite of everything they tried, it still wasn't enough. So I think doing that effort in-house, like, we know that doesn't work. That's, but, I mean, I guess I'll let you go into your presentation about, you know, the components of that because I see it's got more than one, I guess, is, do you want Miller to give their presentation under item four about the pieces of it, the, the public information versus the survey versus the whatnot? So let's see if anyone has questions first on item three before we move ahead. Any council members have questions on item three, which is the referendum rules and the timing? If not, Chief, do you have anything extra to add before we would bring on Miller?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay.
I just would say, we're not alone in struggling to make ends meet and the need for referendums. They're growing throughout the state every year because of this. And, you know, Miller Communications does have some success in getting referendums passed, again, because there are professionals that know how to articulate the problem. there are professionals that know how to articulate the problem accurately and succinctly, and I think that's what we really need.
Okay. So with that, seeing no questions on item three, we'll move to item four, which is a presentation from Miller Communication regarding community survey and community education services. So we will turn it over to our rep that we have on WebEx from Miller, to kind of walk us through what the options are, should the council choose to engage your firm, and, you know, what options they can pick and choose among.
Yes, thank you all for welcoming us here virtually tonight. My name's Caitlin Ross, I'm joined virtually as well by my colleague Cass Bergman. So, we're here to just share an overview of the support Miller can provide to really develop and execute this public education campaign we've been talking about for the city of Wausau. So, to start out, we'll just give a brief overview of our firm and our experiences, just to provide a little background on us. Then we can move in to details of the education campaign itself, including deliverables and timing, and then lastly, we can walk through that potential survey option for the city of Wausau for your consideration. So, next slide, please. So, to start off by introducing ourselves, we are a full-service communications firm based in Milwaukee. We really take a 360-degree approach for our clients, so we bring a diverse set of skills and services to the table for each of our clients, to really meet the individual needs of your community. So some days, this means solving challenging crisis situations for clients, other days it's launching digital marketing plans, and in recent years, it's really looked like partnering with municipalities across the state, just like the city of Wausau, to address these funding challenges that are threatening city services. And our client roster is pretty diverse, we work with everyone from small nonprofits to large Fortune 500 companies, developing a unique approach for each organization. Next slide, please. Our services include everything from stakeholder communications, media relations, crisis management, digital advertising, and web development, all that's included in your packets, and really, we strive to make sure that the right message is delivered to the right audience at the right time to help them make informed decisions. Next slide, please. We have a really deep bench strength at Miller, so our team has 40-plus professionals that bring a wide range of experience, and all of our teams are custom-built to serve each client, to just make sure that we have the right mix of skills, personalities, and background to get the job done for you all. Up here, you'll see our list of staff members, we have everyone from former print journalists, broadcast journalists, local and state legislative staffers, and people who've worked in corporate environments as well. Additionally, from a budget perspective, we include team members from all different levels of experience, always making sure to have the most qualified, least costly staff member execute staffs for a successful on-budget campaign. Next, I'll turn it over to Cass to jump into the education campaign process.
Thanks, Caitlin, and I echo her in just saying thank you so much for having us tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to meet with you and to talk about what we can provide in terms of referendum support. So, if you want to advance to the next slide, through our initial conversations with Maryann Chief Cop and the rest of the team, we've pulled together some recommendations that would target, again, that April 2026 election. Excuse me. So, in each engagement, we work with each municipality to create a public information campaign. That campaign will include different touchpoints throughout your community to help give residents those resources that they need to make an informed decision. Again, we really define the goal of our campaigns as an engaged and informed electorate, and as we were already talking about before, the education, or the campaign itself would be educational in nature, and would not advocate for a certain outcome. After working with the team to really develop that plan and the different touchpoints, we would start on developing some foundational materials. The core of those foundational materials is a messaging document, think of that as a narrative that we use to talk about the need in Wausau, different stats and things, like Chief Cop was already setting up at the beginning of this conversation, in terms of grant funding that's rolled off, stats about increased calls for service, and needing to rely on mutual aid, and putting those into a visual context too, so that residents can really get a picture of what the situation is in Wausau. From there, we use that narrative to cascade through a number of materials that can be used by city staff and elected officials to talk about the referendum, and again, what that yes vote means, what the no vote means, and then what the tax impact would be as well. Next slide, please. A number of other materials that we usually develop as part of an educational campaign are a number of direct mailers, and so, this, in a digital world, always seems like kind of an interesting tactic to pursue, but honestly, we've had the most success with direct mail in helping get the word out about what is on the referendum ballot. So, for Wausau, we've estimated three mailers that would be mailed to every residence throughout the community. We also work on a number of different other pieces, like posters and displays that can be hung up around City Hall or other city properties, and then, like you had mentioned, I think one of the council members was mentioning previously, a presentation deck that can be used by city staff to conduct information sessions, both at City Hall and with other relevant groups around the community as well. Next slide, please. Lastly, we work through a number of different online components, so we'll make sure that the website, the city's website, has an up-to-date landing page with all of these materials, so with a fact sheet, with relevant videos or other items that we would create. We'll also work through social media posts that can be posted on all social media properties. We'll also work together to develop a paid approach for social media, so we know that Wausau's got a pretty good number of residents that are following its Facebook page, but paid ads help us get outside of just those followers, and are able to target geographically to make sure that we can target all residents. We're also happy to help write content for any emails, newsletters, utility bill inserts, things like that, to help get the word out in a way where it's reached by all members of the community in the way that they get information. We also work throughout to make sure that we're communicating to the media as well, so we'll develop a few press releases throughout the engagement. So first, when that question is voted on by council, and then at a number of different other touchpoints, to announce things like the information sessions, and then the outcome of the actual vote as well. I'm going to turn it over to Caitlin, to talk us through timeline.
Thanks, Cass. So for your reference here, we've included what a timeline over the next few months would look like in order to have a referendum question placed onto the April ballot. This includes question support, planning, and information gathering throughout the rest of 2025, and then, beginning in 2026, really hitting the ground running with that public education campaign with all of the different facets that Cass covered. Key milestones for consideration here really is that the deadline to approve the referendum question is coming up on January 27th, so that's really the deadline that we would be working towards here. Next slide, please. Based on our conversations with the city, we've identified this budget as the recommended approach for the city of Wausau, and we can absolutely work to refine this scope to base on your community needs. This includes our professional fees, as well as that paid media spend that Cass was mentioning earlier, to reach the residents of Wausau on social media. In addition to our professional fees, you'll note that this includes the time to mail and print three separate full-color mailers as well to all households in Wausau.
In our conversations too, with Maryann and the chiefs, we did talk about a survey component, and so, this, I think, this sounds like it might not necessarily be the needed approach, now that we would scale the effort down to just focus on firefighters. But if you advance to the next slide, please. We had proposed this just to see if, knowing that there was some community interest in different types of officers that might be included, would help nail down or get just community sentiment on what would, what could be on the ballot, and the overall appetite from a cost standpoint. So again, knowing that we're refining back to just focus on firefighters, this might not be needed anymore, but we've done surveys like this in other municipalities to help guide and educate, again, residents on the need. So we work really closely with a group called Community Perception. They do surveys both for municipalities, and they have an arm called School Perceptions that they use for school districts as well. If you go through, I think, we don't need to touch on the next slide with their photos, but we can go to the slide that says "survey approach," there you go, thanks so much. This approach is one where they want to make sure, again, that the community's understanding what is on the ballot and what's needed, and also just help figure out what that fold-for question might be. So if you go to the next slide, part of their approach would include time for us to help with some initial messaging, like we talked about earlier, but then, time for the Community Perceptions team to build and develop a survey that's mailed to every home in the city of Wausau. So that survey includes a cover letter to explain the challenge that we have also started to discuss and outline today, context explaining the impact of each of those funding solutions, and then also could potentially include a couple of other questions that are relevant to the municipality as well. The biggest thing with this, honestly, is going to be timing. So, I reached out to them earlier this week just to gauge what they had thought a potential timeline might be, and it would truly be needing to work on the survey next week to get it out in mailboxes in mid-November. That mid-November deadline is important, because it will allow residents enough time to take and return the survey, which they can do either by mail, or each survey has an online code that is unique to the mailing that they can go online and use, but that gives them also enough time to analyze it and get that, get those results back in front of councils, in case there's deliberation or consideration on how to move forward. As Caitlin mentioned, that January 27th date is really the date that we'll need to be cognizant of as we discuss referendum question timing and votes through council, and so, it would be a very quick turnaround and a very quick onboarding, I think, for the Community Perceptions team, but they're definitely up for the challenge. So then, if you kind of flip through, the rest of the, this option are pretty much the same. So, we would help, again, develop some key messages and content for the website to help tee that up for residents, and then that education plan remains the same as what I had touched on in the previous option as well. It does come, yeah, feel free to flip through those slides, I think these are all in your packet as well. So again, none of that is different, it is just truly the need to discuss and implement that survey approach pretty quickly in the next two weeks. I think there's also a budget, if you keep going. Yep, so, budget for this does, this is for, again, both that survey support and the full education campaign. Again, the third-party cost for mailing is predominantly what you're seeing here, too. So I think with that, that is really the bulk of our presentation, but we would love to answer any questions, or go back to discuss any other pieces, to make sure that, that we're as helpful as we can, we can be right now.
I have one question, and then we'll open it up, I guess. I guess, given the timeframe being as narrow as it would be, I mean, with the survey component, it feels to me like, just based on the rush nature of where we're at on this calendar, that the, I think the time may have passed for a survey. And I also think that, I feel like, if the Finance Committee, and then subsequently the council, after that, decides that it wants to press forward with a referendum, they either do or don't, right? Like, and it's going to pass or not, like, the idea that we would go out now in the 11th hour and take the temperature of the community, the vote is going to take the temperature of the community, if they have accurate information. But I also struggle, I guess, on the survey piece to know, I mean, in the past, we've done citizen surveys before, and we've struggled to get a robust enough response percentage to be able to get a large enough data sample to get reliable predictions. You know, in fact, we're doing one online right now, or we were, that had a fairly low rate of return. We've done them by mail before, we've done them online, and, you know, there, you struggle to even get a 10% response rate sometimes, so, you know, I guess, it sounded to me like when we started the presentation, your recommendation was to focus on the education and not the survey?
Yes, we, I mean, overall, the education campaign is what we think is best for Wausau. We did want to present the option, though, to make sure you knew that that could be a possibility, especially as the, earlier in the week when we started our conversations with the team, it was the 12 firefighters, plus potentially a couple of staff for the police department as well, and so, we didn't know if that was something that we needed to get resident feedback on as part of helping inform the approach or not, so.
I see.
I think, knowing that it's going to focus on fire staff, it does help streamline that a little bit.
And so, council members, any additional questions on the presentation? Alder Neal.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Alder Neal here. We have a significant Hmong-speaking segment of our population here in Wausau. How would that be addressed?
Thank you for that information.
To a certain degree, Hispanic too, but not to, quite to the same degree.
Yeah, thank you for that, that's really helpful information. So we have some translators that we've worked with, and we have translated materials into Hmong for other campaigns. That translation service isn't reflected in the proposal you have in front of you, but we can definitely include that for key pieces and work with the, work with city staff to just make sure that we've got a good approach for, if it's all pieces that we're translating, or just components of pieces that we're translating. Other communities that we've worked with have done dual-language mailers too, so, I mean, definitely something that we can work into a revised proposal, but I think that is an incredibly great question that you flagged for us.
Alder Killian.
First of all, your presentation is extremely professional and impressive, so thank you. As an alderperson representing my district, I have some real concerns about the cost for our city at this time. We're looking at, we're having difficulties with expenditures for things that are services to our children and, and our, the people in our city, and Maryann pointed out that we're not professionals, and, you know, it's helpful, and it is very helpful to have the advice of a professional, especially when we send out literature. Is there any, and I don't know why, I just thought about this, but it feels to me as though the city would have the ability to put something out, but is there any kind of option with your company? For example, if the city wanted to put out in its newsletter, it sounds like the concerns are, they won't understand what it means if they vote yes, or if they vote no, that, you know, we want to explain to them the ramifications of their votes. So is there an option with your company, if our city would decide to, on their own, put out some material to the residents, for you to just advise them on the language that would, that they would put out? Again, my concern is the extreme cost of your program, and that might be a positive way to get out the appropriate language and the most beneficial language, but not have it be such a strain on our city. I do have concerns about the whole program, and I don't think I can support that, but I just wondered if that might be an option for our city to be effective in educating our residents about how the ramifications of their votes, yes or no, if you vote yes, this is what happens, if you vote no, that's what happens.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, first of all, cost for municipalities for this program is not something that we take lightly, so we know that this is unfortunately a situation that many municipalities are facing, and we know that it's an added cost at a time where cost is really, just really in focus. So, we want to make sure, though, that for any proposal that we put forward, that it best meets the needs of the community. And so we did do a brief intake session with the team earlier this week, to start to get our arms around team capacity and resourcing within, within the city staff. So we are always, though, we're always happy to go back and revisit proposals to make sure that it best aligns with available resources and available staff capacity. So, to the question, though, of can we help advise, absolutely. So, that messaging document that we, that I had outlined before, so that is, it's a core piece, and it can get kind of lengthy, it's like, sometimes it's like eight or nine pages of messaging, but- It's like, sometimes it's like eight or nine pages of messaging, but it really puts all of the different pieces that you'll want to use to lay out that story in one place. So everyone kind of has it to sing from the same songbook. That then can be used if there is a staffer that usually does the newsletter, that is absolutely a piece that they can use to build an article for that. Or if there is a staff member that does do social media, they can take that messaging document and work it into different social media posts. So the proposal that we've outlined is what we thought would best meet the needs of the community. If there is a different way that we would want to approach it, we're absolutely happy to have the conversation to do that.
I know when, when you're talking about these lengthy mailers, I know the council president, when I just said maybe we could put something out in our newsletter and if, if you assisted with the language and that, so you felt it would be appropriate, she said, oh, I don't know if they'll read it. I don't think they're going to be reading anything too lengthy. And I, I know during election times, people get sick of getting information and they don't read it, they just toss it in their garbage. So I just thought that maybe an appropriate way would be to have the city put out something in their newsletter and if you were open to assisting them with professional language that would educate them regarding what their vote meant, that might be a better option for our city at this time.
So it sounds to me like what we're talking about.
I think also part of.
Oh, go ahead. I was just going to recap and say, I think what we're asking for is maybe whether or not it's possible to do some type of content consultation, you know, and maybe, you know, consult on or work on the creation of one core piece that then staff could potentially create or implement, spinoff pieces or spinoff content for smaller other venues. So you know, if, if there's a consultation component and you know, perhaps the creative development of one piece, that then could lead to the internal spinoff creation of, you know, smaller pieces of that that would perhaps be uploaded to the social media platforms we already have, uploaded to the website, you know, to the newsletter we currently have, which we do have a staffer that gathers articles for that. So I mean, is, I think that's what, you know, maybe we'd be interested in, if it's possible as an alternative to a full menu of creative services and, I mean, the mailing expense is likely the same either way. I would imagine the stuff goes out on a bulk permit. So you know, is, is that an option to maybe pare down the service realm?
It's, it's always an option, yeah. I will say that the, the proposal that we've put together, we have included all these different touchpoints because to the point that you were making, not everyone reads the newsletter, so not everyone goes to social media, not everyone gets their news from broadcast media. So we do have this robust array of options in terms of where content is going to go and where it's going to live so that it cuts across different demographics, different ages, different genders, things of that nature, so that wherever I'm going for my news and content, I'm seeing something and maybe wherever, like let's say my mom is going, which might be a different spot, she would still see things too. So again, always happy to look at proposals to make sure that we're putting forward the right costs. We can also reduce the number of mailers. Three is usually the optimal number, just to make sure that we're cascading it throughout before absentee ballots go out, right around the time absentee ballots go out and then right before in-person voting takes place. But again, I think we'd want to have a discussion to make sure that the team within the city felt comfortable about repurposing creative content in that way and then what role we would take and what role they would take.
Just, just to make it clear about my question, is it's just if, if we took a look at your whole program and said, no, it's too costly for our city right now, we can't do that. If the city said, we would like to put information out ourselves for our residents, would you just assist or be hired to assist with the appropriate language that you feel would educate our residents as to what their yes or no vote means? Because it feels like that's the biggest concern is we want residents to understand fully what they do when they vote. And I personally had never thought about needing this type of education for a resident to know that, but I do understand that there may be difficulties in that area. So would it just be possible for you to work with the city and just assist with language for the city to do their own mailers?
I mean, we can, we can assist in whatever way the city feels is best. We would just need to go back and agree upon what that scope might look like.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And the other component is the printing, material printing and the material postage. We get that cost either way, whether we outsource it or whatever, so we kind of know what that's going to be from the proposal. I do think that for our purposes tonight, if we are all kind of in agreement that we don't need the survey piece, because that really is where the rush was, to get that survey out in front of people and get results back.
Correct.
If we know that the survey piece is a non-starter and we're really looking at either the public education piece or some type of content consulting or content review, I feel like we have some time to think about that. I think there's also some time for Miller to network with our staff to determine what our capabilities really are, if we were going to look at a pared-down approach. And I guess if there is such an approach, I would be interested in what that price difference looks like. And I don't think we're equipped to calculate that all tonight. You know, I guess is, that would be my question, I guess, to our team is, I don't feel like we're in a position where we have to make a recommendation to the council tonight if the survey piece is a non-issue, right? So not to say we couldn't have another session like this and come back and review a couple of pricing alternatives, so we could pick from like an option one or an option two and then make that recommendation to council. In the meantime, the Finance Committee still has meetings to go yet where they have to decide if they're even interested in referendum, right? So they started some referendum discussion last Tuesday or Monday, but that discussion really didn't wrap up, right? Did you come out of there with a decision about?
We didn't, we didn't. And I think it's been a little challenging as staff to know where that kind of decision sits at council. You know, it doesn't seem to fit with the Finance Committee, it doesn't seem to fit in one specific thing and it's obviously very important information for you as council members to all kind of understand what's at stake here as far as what, the 12 positions that would be, will be basically unfunded in 2027 and that we really don't have any other options as far as increasing the levy. So we will have to either cut expenses, either by eliminating positions, cutting programs. You know, we've kind of seen the challenges that just the 2026 budget has presented to us or finding new revenue sources. So you know, if we are unsuccessful in the referendum, those really will be the choices and you know, really council makes those decisions, we don't.
Right.
And so we felt it was really important for all council members to kind of have a voice in this and it is a one-time expense and it is a big, an important investment to make, I think, if you're going to go through the referendum is to do a great job informing the residents so that they have an opportunity to know what they're voting on.
And I think that's an approach the school system has had to take before when they had their largest referendum.
And I do think that, you know, we, we, the surveys that we've recently taken, the residents, we did ask residents, how do you want to, us to communicate with you? And they said they like information presented to them through the mail at home.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the newsletter.
And the newsletter.
That's helpful because, and I think given the, like your, to your point, whose decision is it really to make? I would be content to continue that conversation in a committee of the whole format. I think it is something that's important to all 11 of us and I think it really isn't fair to finance to confine, confine that discussion to the Finance Committee and then, and then have them send it forward to council. That said, because we would not have that survey component, I feel like we do have a couple of weeks for Miller and staff to work together and determine how much different the pricing would be if they were engaged in a consulting role or in perhaps, you know, the consulting role versus, or in a limited content creation role where they're creating the one piece, the larger piece, and then our staff is then parsing pieces of that to disseminate through other vectors. So you know, you could potentially have a couple of different options to look at for the engagement, for how much work you are going to request that Miller do for us, right? Is that something that could be worked out? And we certainly could schedule a future session of this group, you know, and at that point, we would probably be equipped to make a decision because we would know first what the options are and what they cost. Would that be something that we're comfortable with? Lou, Sarah, oh, Chad, sorry.
Thank you. Are we onto Agenda Item Number Five? No.
We've, we're kind of gravitating toward Agenda Item Number Five. I didn't introduce it, but they do go hand in hand. Item Five is discussion and possible action on retaining Miller for the referendum services that we just discussed, so let's transition to that.
Okay. I was waiting for that before.
Yep.
I guess these are the experts and I mean, they've done this before. I really feel we would shortchange them and the city and this referendum if we start piecemealing this or you know, this is their recommendation as the experts. I also feel the sooner we get moving on this, because this will probably still have to go through Finance, this will probably have to go to council, even without the survey, which I, I don't feel we need that part of it. We, I still feel we need to keep this moving because January 27th will be here in no time.
That is true.
So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Limited meeting schedule in December as well, we do. So Alder Watson.
I just, I guess I had a question about the scope of like the design of the materials. It sounds like they would be designing the materials too, like the mailers. And that, I mean, that takes a lot of time. I mean, our, our newsletter is pretty like, we've got a template, you can plug and play, right? But to do the like robust type of like creation of the digital media, I think would be really complex to do in-house. And I think that's really important that, to tap into all these different kinds of ways people communicate, because I mean, everybody consumes information differently. So I don't know, I, I really, I really appreciate what's put out there. I mean, besides the fact that like, just the mailing part is like 35,000. So I mean, their expertise is about another 40, which I think is sort of a reasonable amount to get outside expertise. So that's my two cents.
Okay. Alder Neal.
Thank you. Well, just going back a few slides to the page that says education campaign only, this is essentially what we're talking about without the survey piece, I guess. And it's a three-piece mailing scenario and we're talking about possibly a two-piece, which could drop about 12,000 possibly off of that cost, which puts us into the 60s or thereabouts and, but probably some additional cost related to translation, unless we take care of that here locally. So I mean, we are potentially, I guess, looking at something between 65 and 70,000 for the education campaign. I, I kind of lean towards the, you know, every house gets a couple of mailings. That's a, that's a fair shot to get the word out. I mean, we could, we could do everything under the sun, but it's going to cost us a lot of money and, and we'll get, you know, in trouble for doing that, for being too communicative. So I mean, I think it's a pretty fair shot to a couple of mailings. You know, I, I appreciate the input of, of the vendor from their expertise, language and you know, design efforts and whatnot, that is going to make it easier to digest for our electorate. So I mean, I probably would lean towards supporting that kind of scenario.
Okay. Alder Martins.
Thank you. Yep. I'm just going to speak first about, you know, your, your comments about taking this to the Finance Committee first versus the Committee in a Whole. And I think at our budget sessions, there was a general consensus, although not, not explicitly stated, that this is a big item and I, I think it's, this is, this is the better forum to discuss this in the Committee in a Whole than just at, you know, back and forth at the, at the Finance Committee. So I'm, I'm good, I'm glad that we have this Committee of the Whole this evening. As for the proposal for the, the educational campaign here from Mueller, I, I, I think this is a very good idea. I think a successful referendum is going to be in how we educate the, the voters, the citizens. And I, I do remember the referendums 10 years ago that the city went through where they, where the city did it on their own. And there was a lot of information that was presented and I don't know if it was presented in the best way. I remember sitting in neighborhood, neighborhood meetings, getting, you know, getting just, you know, inundated with information, but not really in a, in a cohesive form or manner. And that's probably, you know, the, the, I don't want to say slipshot, but the, just the way in which the education was presented probably was the big reason why those referendums failed. So education is very important. It's something that, and to see, you know, just a couple of years ago, you know, when the school district went through their referendum, you having a successful education piece and those listening sessions, and I, I attended all of those because I was, I was concerned about their referendum and I thought it was, they did a very good job. And that original, that original referendum did pass, so that is, that's, that's an important thing to note. I, I think the community would, would support a referendum and it's, if it's presented in, in a, in a proper manner. The costs, they seem, you know, to Alder Neal's points, I think the costs are in line here. You know, the printing and postage is not cheap. Three mailings, we could probably get by with two mailings and using the newsletter as our third mailing piece, considering that there's only going to be one newsletter coming out during election season in March. So that could, so the information in that newsletter could serve as part of the, part of one of those educational, those, those, of those three educational pieces, just shaving our costs and maybe using that, you know, and using that money to having a robust translation services, which I'm in total agreement with. So, thank you.
Alder Neal.
Thank you. As, as you often see with referendums on any, you know, subject, inevitably, you know, you start seeing the yard signs, vote yes and vote no, you know, Proposition B or whatever. I anticipate that there would be some, something of that in the city coming from different, different directions, you know, different groups or different individuals might, you know, fund, you know, signs for or signs against. So I mean, that will be there and that might have some people going, well, what's that all about? So I mean, these, this education piece really, it's kind of like, this is what it's all about, you know, and I think it's a vital part of what we need, because a yard sign's not going to tell the story. It's just going to say that this house supports or doesn't support.
Well, I do think that if we are serious about getting accurate information to our population consistently surrounding an issue this large, that we really can't leave it to one-on-one conversations between all of us in the population. I think we also can't leave it to, you know, coffee shop discussions. Like we, we have to have, what I feel at least my, for my own voting purposes, is we need a concise, concerted approach that gets consistently accurate information in front of people and that allows them to make an informed decision. The decision they make yes or no is going to be theirs, it's up to them. But they have got to have all the facts and they've got to have accurate facts to do it with, you know? And so often, the first thing you see happen is the misinformation mill starts. And so, you know, I think that really, I, I think the public does depend on us to disseminate accurate information and if we're asking them to, you know, make a decision like that, if we, if we don't have good communication where they can understand what they're being asked and why and what the true costs are year on year, that then really is a failure on our part if we can't get that in front of folks. Alder Neal.
And there's also a, a very large element in the communication scenario, which is sitting right to my right right now. And the role of, of the mayor in this, in the, in the roll-up to the, the vote is really going to be key. I, I think the city will be looking to the mayor, you know, for his take on it all. And you know, I hope, you know, that. And, you know, I hope, you know, that his activities would be pretty robust in that case.
He's visible, but I also think it's not fair for us to make that his job, you know?
No, but inevitably, it is his job, though.
Well, but not solely. And, you know, obviously, he'll have an opinion, and he's out there, and he's visible in the public, but, you know, I just, I really don't feel that it's fair to put any mayor in that position and be like, here, go out and sell this, you know, because ultimately, we're going to make that decision, we're going to make the decision on how it gets paid for and whether or not there's money for it, you know? And that is really one of the, one of the struggles that I've heard from, from all mayors, that you really are put in a position where you really have to have a collaborative approach with the policymaking body, because whatever decision we make, they're left with. And so, if we decide that we're going to go forward with this, we cannot make the education and public communication component of it, that, that, that person's job, we just really can't. So...
Right. I just want to clarify that I'm not looking, you know, to the mayor to be a cheerleader or anything of that nature, or making a strong position statements.
Oh, I see.
It's more like that he will have a grasp of those facts.
He will.
The pros and cons, and he could speak to the pros and cons, and, and the numbers, but doing it from his position makes it more visible, you know? So, he doesn't have to come out there and say, hey, vote yes for this, or vote no for that. He, but merely by being the mayor and leader, you know, of the city, would be able to say, well, here is a rundown of what we're talking about. I just want to clarify, you know, what people are talking about, and I think that that is part of his role.
Well, and he'll inevitably be asked, but, you know, he doesn't, I just, I don't know. In that, in those same shoes, I don't know that I would be excited to have that responsibility handed off to me. I think if you can get professional materials and you get consistently accurate information out there, inevitably, every single one of us is going to be asked about this. We're going to be asked in neighborhood groups, we're going to be asked in the grocery store, we're going to be asked in the, out on the street. So, you know, and that, that said, between January and April, candidates are going to be out talking with, we all are up for reelection in April, candidates are all going to be out having conversations on doorsteps with folks. We're going to get asked about this. So, it's important for us to have the right information and give the right answers. But I also think that the city as an institution really needs to project forward the right information. So, you know, that then begs the question, because either way with this, I believe Mary Ann said there's a budget mod involved, and so that is going to happen in finance and council anyway, right? So, and we know that as a Committee of the Whole, we want this venue to make the decision as to whether or not we are wanting to hire for consulting or for this, for this public education service. Do you guys feel like you are equipped to make a recommendation to council tonight on this proposal? You know, obviously, the wording of the question, the budget mod, all of that is future decisions that are going to happen with separate votes, but have you heard enough tonight where you're comfortable in making a recommendation? Or would you like us, one, one extra session? Alder McElhany, and then Alder Killian.
I'm, I'm not ready for this. I think that your decision to wait, we haven't even talked about the referendum. I think in order to, for me to feel comfortable in what the budget is for this type of consultancy, I'm not saying that's not the right way to go, but I think it's a chicken and an egg, and I don't think, I think that the egg is coming first before the chicken, because we have to just, I think I need to hear what is, what is the difference between a referendum and non-referendum? If we don't have a referendum, what would happen? I think those pieces need to be talked about, either at a Committee of the Whole, whatever you want, and then as that decision to make a referendum, then we can decide how best to use a budget. Is it two mailings? Is it three mailings? Is it more than that? We don't know, because I don't know what, and I did ask the question in, in the, one of the budget meetings, what happens if this doesn't pass? I think there are a lot of questions out there, and I think we're just the chicken and egg type of thing. I'm not ready to make a recommendation to hire, and I don't want to give this company pause, you know, to say, yeah, we're hiring, and then we come back and something happens, and we think, well, we have to lower the budget, or we have to do this. I want to do this the correct way, and I agreed with your earlier statement that I don't think we're in a panic mode button right now. I think we can wait a week or two. This came out, I mean, I found out about this Committee of the Whole on Monday. This came out pretty quickly. I think we need to let it sit, ask those questions, let us get through budget session too, because we have some prickly stuff going on there as well, and I think we're still talking about other positions. I just don't think that we're where we're supposed to be right now. And I'm not saying I'm going to not support this or support it, but I don't feel like I'm equipped enough to be able to say or to tell my residents why I supported this budget, because I don't know what's going to happen.
Well, and the other thing we need to absorb is what the fund source is. I mean, if it's a budget mod, obviously, we're going to take money from one line and put it to another. What would that but, fund source be, Mary Ann? Is, are we just shift, are we shifting it from surplus contingency, like surplus? So, 2024 surplus?
Yeah.
Okay. So, there are funds on hand for it. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since I was referencing tonight, you know, I think one of the tricks you put yourselves in is watching some of the developments, even the meeting just prior to this, where we have some now second thoughts on potentially adding more capital expenses. So, I do think if the, or the survey piece is not there, the urgency may be somewhat less, and we need to take a look at that. So, this week, I was lambasted in the paper for consulting to cut costs, and the trick you're in now is you're advocating to spend money, to spend more money, encourage more spending. So, I think there's time left in the budget process. We've got until, I mean, ultimately, till the end of November to finalize. So, I would urge common council to invest more time addressing our structural shortfalls for the long term, because otherwise, it just feels like we're punting on first down here. And, you know, I know we can't afford to delay long to make some decisions, but, you know, I call on you to dig, dig deeper, because just fixing this today doesn't, doesn't fix our structural habit to spend more than we, than we can, and we'll be in the same spot in, in years from now. So, we, we need to make some fundamental changes now, I believe, and we have that opportunity, and we have all of 26 to get ready for this as well. But we need to take the next couple of weeks in finance to have a clear picture of how we're, we're going to fund this. Thank you.
Okay. So, given that, because, I mean, I can see the value. We did just pull this meeting together this week because not knowing whether or not you guys wanted the survey piece, if you wanted the survey piece, we were then really, really short on time. So, without that, we do have some breathing room, and I know that sometimes we feel a little more comfortable if we have a couple of weeks to like mull this stuff over, along with the, the funding and, and whatnot. So, knowing that, I guess, would you be comfortable if we would schedule another session like this to come back? We can talk about the two, two mail pieces versus three mail pieces. We'll talk about the mechanics of the money. Finance will be a little further along with their 2026 budget. If we would try to do that towards the end of October, would you guys be amenable to that? I mean, we'll, we'll give a couple of weeks here to let a few other things come to light, and then we'll come back around this table as a group, and then we can have a more informed decision. And, you know, then hopefully by that first part of November, staff will know what our decision is, you know, and then they can go forward, you know, to either, to either engage Miller or how, and, you know, and to what level. So, I guess you wouldn't have to take action on that if you decide that you wanted to just allow some time and then come back. Alder Larson.
I guess, thank you, Madam Chair. I guess one other decision we're going to have to make before we even do any move forward on this is, is do we feel that a referendum is, is the way to go with, to address this shortage? You know, I think we have to reach that first before we, we, we move ahead.
We, we do. I think what we should do is, I mean, Mary Ann kind of alluded to the fact that we have, well, like when we looked at the Ellers report, and they said some of the tools that some communities use is to shift their capital project spending to the levy and then finance this other stuff. We really don't, right, to debt, to debt, but we don't have that, that option, really, because we reduced over the years, at least over the last 15 years, we've likely, I think we've reduced our capital spending by two-thirds. We used to spend over a million dollars a year on CIP, and now we've pared that down further and further and further and further. So, even if you were to do that, you're really only covering at the most to half million dollars. Like, you're not getting the amount that the levy exceedance asks for. You're not solving a complete problem. The other thing is, you know, like we talked about the transferring a fee to the utility, we have already on the utility bill what people refer to as a fire hydrant fee. That's what that is, and that's been on there for, for like forever. We don't get that choice either. So, we're left with then cuts, and we struggled. I stayed for the Finance Committee Monday night, and it really was a struggle. I mean, it really, you can tell that nobody takes those decisions lightly. It is gut-wrenching to cut services and facilities that people depend on. And, you know, just the talk about, you know, trading janitorial service for flowers, for pools, for, you know, that, that is not an easy decision to make, and if next year's worse, like, we, we have so few choices. And, you know, could we paint a picture of what it looks like if we don't go to referendum? It would look, in my guess, it would look very similar to the list of offered cuts, maybe worse though, that came for the 2026 budget. Like, the departments offered up a menu of cuts to be picked. They picked some, they put them in the budget draft. Even those were gut-wrenching. It could be more. Like, you know, if, are you looking at a series of layoffs? Are you looking at a series of facility closures? Are you looking at a complete deferral on maybe all capital? Like, and then, you know, that then brings the complaint that facilities don't get kept up, streets don't get repaired, like, you know, there is, any time that we've tried to cut some of these things, I go back to when we decided that to save some money, we were going to quit mowing certain areas of the parks. That lasted four weeks. And because the idea of the savings of the cut is great on the front end until the effect is felt out on the street, and then the calls come to all of us as Alders, people hate that. So, you know, it's such a balancing act. I feel like we almost don't have, if we wish to keep the staffing level at the fire department where we have it, and because they really have dug themselves out of a hole from where they were before they had those officers or those firefighters, I guess I don't feel like, from what I heard tonight, I don't feel like we have an alternative. I mean, it's, it's kind of a referendum or don't, right? And then if it fails, then the staff, we are up to, we are up against figuring out what the Plan B is, and that Plan B could be even worse decisions than what they were faced with, with their budget workshops. And maybe that discussion starts in finance, but that really puts them in a hard place, right? So, I don't know. I mean, I feel like that isn't even a picture that you could paint quite yet, right? I mean, well, you know what it looked like this year, trying to find 4 million. So, I mean, it did work itself down to like a million and a half, but when you started out in May thinking it was going to be 4 million, that was some pretty tough talk in, you know, that even happened in the, before the budget draft even came, the staff had some really hard conversations to have. So, I don't know. I mean, I, that's, that could be something that we discuss in our second session, but I think that we should be realistic about what we're up against. And, you know, if, if we, if any of us didn't see the trade-offs that were being discussed in finance throughout the workshops, and especially in that last one, go back and watch that on YouTube, because it was really, I mean, it was, it was an agonizing trade-off to watch, and you could tell everyone was struggling to figure out what not to give and, and what not to offer. So, Alder Killian.
What is the latest date that we can say, yes, we're going to referendum, or no, we're not? Because I know we have a neighborhood meeting toward the end of the month, and I really would like to have an opportunity to confer with some of my constituents, just to get a feel for this.
So, we have to have the question figured out by January 27th, and we have one meeting during the month of December, so...
But I think we should ask Miller.
Okay.
You know, like, to put together a good communication plan, because again, like, if we're going to go through this process, we need to do our homework first. You know, it's like anything that you do in life, you want to do it right, build on a strong foundation, and I think that's what Miller Communication is, is that strong foundation. And so, to shortchange that process, I just think is a big mistake. And so, we want to give them the time to do their job well, and I think that should be the driving factor of when we need to pull the trigger.
So, I guess just asking the question of Miller, if we were to make a decision on this situation, say by November 1st, is that enough time?
Absolutely. Yes. Because I think that gives you time to then work through the question details with Ellers. If you go back to, I'm so sorry, whoever is controlling this, do you mind going back to the last Ellers slide? Thanks so much. So, there are truly one of two ways that the question can be worded. So, this is, it's, unfortunately, with these questions, they look like a word salad, but they're pretty predictable in terms of the information that you need to go in there. So, I think the biggest thing is in tandem, working with Ellers to inform the actual overall number, and making sure that this is all squared away from a DOR standpoint. Then that question would come to you as council to approve or not approve. When you take up the question is usually when we want to have a number of materials ready to go. So, if you're kind of, if November 1st is really what you're thinking in terms of having conversations with constituents and working and getting all of that material together in tandem over a couple of weeks in early November, then we can start to work with Mary Ann, Chief Cup, and others on staff to make sure that we've got the data points and information that we need then to develop that messaging document, which would inform other pieces.
Okay. So, let's just say, if we were to set a session, another session like we have tonight, today's the 9th, would we be comfortable having that session on 10:30? That is a Thursday. It doesn't appear we have meetings on the city calendar, so it would be the only thing that night. The other option is we could do it on the 28th after the council meeting, although that could be a fairly long council meeting, because I think there's a couple of closed session items for that night. And we may not have quorum on Tuesday, which means all of the business from Tuesday could end up on the 28th. We're, we're short three members for Tuesday.
The Foundry grand opening is that day at 4:00?
Foundry grand opening is the 30th?
Yep.
I thought it was the 23rd.
It is the 23rd?
I think it's the 23rd, right before our shelter dinner. The dinner at the shelter is the 23rd.
Good to know.
So, yeah, their thing is at 4 o'clock on the 23rd. You know, I guess it's up to you guys. Monday, the 27th is also available after the Room Tax Commission is done. There's also the 20th. Well, we did one time to get through neighborhood meetings, right? Terry, when is your meeting?
It's the last Thursday of the month.
So, it's the 30th.
Well, that's not the last Thursday though, because that's mine.
Oh.
I think it's the 23rd, or is it the last Thursday or the 4th?
Ours is the last Thursday of the month. Also, what I was wondering, in order to address our people appropriately, is it possible to get some information out to the council as to what the costs are going to be for the firefighters and for, I mean, they're going to have a lot of questions when we start talking about referendums, so I'd like to be able to provide some accurate information about...
Are you, are you talking like maybe some bullet points that are drawn from the material that's in this packet we have? Could that be possible?
Just something...
To put out a, just a high-level overview that we could use like a cheat sheet with residents? Is there any chance that that neighborhood meeting could be moved up so that we could...
It's not up to me. I don't, I'm not the...
You're not the leader. Okay. I see. I see. Yeah, I guess that's, that's a thing, but... So...
Tell them to have their meeting here, to come sit. Lou has a meeting at the school, or we should just have a...
That, that is an option. I mean, it does take us to...
I'm not the...
We could invite that to do...
File for November 11th.
Sure. So, November 3rd, after Park and Rec. We then could get our, get to our November, our first council meeting of November and have council act on whatever we recommend. Would that be okay? I mean, we, we would look at 6 o'clock on November 3rd, after Parks ends?
I've got my neighborhood meeting on November 3rd.
On November 3rd?
6:30.
Aren't we canceling the November Park and Rec meeting? Because Jamie's out of town.
You know, we are. We are, because Jamie's out of town. So we could actually do ours at, we could go at 5 o'clock or 5:15, if you guys would be okay with that.
That would work for me, if we go early.
Let's try, let's try 5:15 on November 3rd, and then following that meeting, Maryann can get with Miller, let them know what we've decided, right? And then our final vote on that would be on, is it 11:11? Okay. Let's mark our calendars right away for that, and then we'll make sure that we have, that we're ready for it. And that gives you guys some time to think about this. In the meantime, if you have questions, don't hesitate to individually call out and talk with Chief Cop, talk with Maryann. If you have questions about the numbers, or the plan, or the timing, or the nuts and bolts of the money, I think either one of them would be happy to carry on those conversations. I mean, last year, we did. It was helpful. We all went out and toured the firehouses. We got a close-up look at how the fire department works. So we know the operations side of it. You know, a number of us know what the operations side looked like before these extra folks were staffed. So I know what the impact of losing them is. I can feel that already in our Public Health and Safety Committee. So let's plan for then November 3rd at 6:00. And in the meantime, then, or, I'm sorry, 5:15.
5:15.
I got to correct my time. I wrote down 6:00 before I realized Parks wasn't meeting, so 11:03 at 5:15. Back here at our table. So, thank you, everyone. We have no more agenda items left. Chief Cop.
I just want to take one minute to thank everyone for their time. I know we got a lot of members of the fire department that are hearing these talks, and they are obviously a little nervous, just like I am, so to hear everybody's support and to know that you're all giving it your best foot forward and your best effort, including the girls with Miller right now, I just want to, on behalf of the whole fire department, thank you all for your time tonight.
Well, and thank you for pulling together that information for us tonight as well. You know, we do, in Public Health and Safety, we get reports from fire every month. So, I mean, we do have the privilege of knowing a little more about what's happening there in terms of successes and struggles than maybe what the rest of the council and the community does. But, you know, I just, I know where we came from and where we've gotten to. I really don't want to see us go backwards as a community in terms of public safety. That is, public safety, whenever we have ever gone out and polled our residents and we've asked them in the past, what services do you appreciate the most, and what are critical, mission-critical things? What are the things that a taxpayer would be willing to pay more for? Every single time we've asked that question, public safety is at the top. I mean, when the call comes in, you want people to be able to respond and respond fast, right? So, you know, and this really is an offshoot of that. So I'm glad that we're going to take some time and think it over and make an informed decision. Thanks, everybody, for taking their Thursday tonight to partake in this. And, yeah, like I said, if anyone has any questions, definitely reach out to Maryann or to Chief Cop in between. All right. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion from Watson, second from Neal. Members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No one's ever opposed. Oh, wait, there is one. See, there's one in every crowd.
I'm not opposed, but I did, I did pass out the audit, and the auditors will be here next Tuesday for finance. So this saves us, you know, you don't have to go and get it out of your box. If you don't want it, you can just leave it. But the auditors will be here next Tuesday for finance.
Well, we always enjoy some light readings, so there we go. All right. Thanks, everyone, and we are adjourned. We'll see you, we will see everyone next week.
Thank you.